You first.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started this morning. Thank you so much for being here today. My name is Brian Brown. I'm the Legislative Leader's Chair for the Northeast Johnson County Chamber of Commerce, and I will be serving as your moderator today. Today's event is being put on by the Johnson County Public Policy Council. Members of the Public Policy Council in attendance today are going to be Lee Wood, Chamber of Commerce, Molly Hayes, who represents the Lee Wood Legislative Task Force, and Deb Settle, who's the President and CEO of the Northeast Johnson County Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much. And we also want to thank Colonial Church for allowing us to host this event here today. Today, our official timekeeper will be Ms. Hayes. She will be telling the candidates as to when the end of their questions will be coming up. Questions have been prepared in advance and were provided to the candidates prior to this event. There are no questions that will be allowed from the audience. However, we have asked the candidates to state that if there are questions, you will have time to be able to interface with the candidates at that time. Candidates have been encouraged to stay to be able to engage with individuals. This event will be videotaped and uploaded to the website votejoko.com. When the video event is published, please share it with individuals. Obviously, there's a lot of individuals that live in this jurisdiction that aren't here. As many people as can have the ability to have this information, the better, just to be able to stay engaged and have an opportunity to stand forward. Today, I would like to start off by introducing our candidates running for the Board of County Commissioners, District One. First, we have our incumbent Becky Fast, and then we have our challenger Audra McManay. So really quick, some housekeeping rules, and then we'll go ahead and get started. The format for today's event, each candidate will have two minutes to share their opening remarks. During the question and answer phase, they will have a minute and a half for their responses. Each candidate will be able to also provide a minute and a half closing statement as well, too. We have provided an order for how the candidates, excuse me, will be speaking. And at this time, our first candidate that will be providing open remarks will be our incumbent Becky Fast.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Chamber, Northeast Chamber, everyone for being here, and those of us online. Can you hear me?
I don't think it's on.
Oh. Oh. Hello?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm going to start over. So thank you, everyone, for joining us today here and online. I have to admit, I'm a proud Northeast Chamber Leadership graduate. My name is Becky Fast, and I'm running for reelection to lead Johnson County forward. It has been an honor to represent the Northeast District One, to collaborate with 11 city councils, 11 mayors, and two school districts, and one fire district board. I'm proud that I led Johnson County through the COVID pandemic. Johnson County has rebounded with record job growth, with record low unemployment. In fact, there is more people working now than any time in our county's recorded history. I'm proud to be a part of that success. As your Commissioner, I have championed improvements in infrastructure, roads, sewer, transit, which have paved the way for 4,000 jobs at the Sunflower Ammunition Plant and 4,000 jobs at our new Century Airport. I have been a proactive leader, seeking your input, speaking at town halls, HOAs, churches, and neighborhood groups. I've diligently worked to pick up the phone, to answer your phone calls, to answer your emails. I got over 20,000 emails during the pandemic. I will build on that strong foundation that paved the way of those who came before me and to create more progress.
Thank you very much. We will now hear the opening remarks for Ms. McManay.
Good morning. Audra McManay here. Thank you, Becky, so much for your previous leadership, and thank you, Chambers and Ms. Church, for being here today. And to everyone in the audience, I especially thank my beautiful daughter, Mary Grace, for always supporting me and my family for being here, because without my family and their support, I wouldn't be able to be the leader that I've been called to be. I would not be able to serve in the capacity and shine the gifts that I've been given naturally in this world. I want to just open with a quote that I found as I prepared for events occurring this weekend. Remember, when you're in a position to help someone, be glad and always do it, because that's the universe answering someone else's prayers through you. See, although I don't have county leadership experience, yet I am a leader. And I was called forth by my intimate community, and they said, "Audra, our county needs your natural gifted skills." I am a financial wizard. I joke, and I call myself a math magician, because I do math all day. And right now, with the state of the world as it is, we need a little bit more factual, logical data to forward us as we pivot, because Becky's right. Unemployment is exceptionally low worldwide, but our costs going up for everyone are exceptionally high. So thank you so much for this opportunity to be here. I look forward to sharing my thoughts and to getting you all, getting to know you all better.
Thank you very much, Ma'am. Ms. McManay, the first question will be addressed to you. What do you believe is the most important skill or competency that distinguishes you from your opponent in this race? If you were elected, how would that skill benefit Johnson County?
Thanks, Brian, for asking. The most important skill that I have is that I am a successful entrepreneur, and I am financially gifted. My financial acumen comes forward for everything that I do. Professionally, I've been able to earn positions of being recognized among the top 1% in the business world that I'm in. And what I do every day is I help people. In fact, annually, I help hundreds of people look at their financial position in the world and make it better. When I make it better for them, I provide for myself, my family, my clients. We create a win-win-win all the way around. I volunteer in my community to offer complementary classes to better people for skills that they need. So my reach is deep to educate and empower. I also believe that when it comes to money, we can't manage what we don't monitor. And I have got a great overview system to make sure that all of my businesses thrive, that all of my employees are living the best life that they have created together with me. And I look forward to bringing my success and running business into the county and managing that so that we all have a win together.
Thank you very much, Ma'am. Ms. Bass, the same question to you. What do you believe is the most important skill or competency that you possess that distinguishes you from your opponent in this race? And how is that skill, how will it benefit Johnson County?
Thank you, Audra. I have a long background, a proven record of leadership in working at the federal, state, and local government level. I got my master's in public administration. That degree has equipped me with tools to analyze data and find savings and make sure our services are efficient and effective. My current experience as your county commissioner, working with staff, will help me to move policies forward on day one. I previously served two terms on the Roland Park City Council. I was elected by my peers twice unanimously, which never happens at Roland Park, to be the council president because of my ability to deliver results and bring our community together. I've worked at the state legislature. I currently work in the Kansas Legislature. I worked as a policy analyst for former Governor Graves and for the late Congressman Dennis Moore at the federal level. Knowing state and federal laws, I guide our staff often on how to cut through red tape, how to cut through regulations, which, because very few of our county staff have worked at the federal, state, and local level, and I'm often referring them to state resources, federal resource, and grants. Both of those experiences and knowledge help protect your taxpayer dollars and reduce your taxpayer burden.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bass. You both are here because you both feel the work that the county is doing is very important. So my next question would be towards looking forward. Over the next three, over the next four years, please provide three critical initiatives that you believe will move Johnson County. And please provide details with each initiative. And if there's an applicable funding source that needs to be attached to that, please identify that as well, too. Ms. Bass, question would be to you.
The lucky one. So one of the reasons I ran in 2018 was my passion to increase access to mental health care. I have worked to integrate our mental health into our 911 system, into law enforcement. At the end of this year, we will have mental health providers with our 911. There is more that we need to do. We need a youth crisis center. Second, I have been working with our county staff to increase access to early childhood. We don't have the available slots in this county for childhood. I spoke at a Prairie Village Forum about this, and we're going to allocate $2 million to create a childcare training center. Workforce development and recruitment is a huge issue in our county for employers, for nonprofits, so that we can retain and recruit a skilled workforce. We are going to be using some of our federal funds for workforce partnerships with KU, JCC. I have a brother that I am the legal guardian for with Down Syndrome. He has many friends that need supportive employment, and there hasn't been that support. And so part of this federal funding that we're appropriate will help people with ADD in the workplace, will help people with mental illness in the workplace. So I'm really excited. We'll be working with Chambers, KU, JCC, on this workforce development. These are three snapshots of critical issues, childcare, workforce, and mental health that I will be focusing on in the future.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bass, and thank you for your work relative to some of these issues. Ms. McManay, the question now to you. Looking forward, can you please provide what you believe are three critical initiatives that will move Johnson County forward in the next four years? If elected, please give details on each initiative, and please identify funding sources if appropriate.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I'm a very literal and logical person. I think that that's important for you to know. So when I think of the word initiative, I looked it up to share what that means. It's to assess and initiate things independently. And I want to make sure that we know that as a board, that on the Board of County Commissioners, it's a group effort. As a Commissioner, we work together for the community. I do have priorities that are important to me through my personal life experience, as well as through the clients that I've helped over the years. First would be really the financial aspect. We need to demand an accountability for people that are not performing financially and contracts that are already existing in the government. Right now, I find it absolutely unacceptable for a builder that's got an approved budget to come midway and say, "Hey, I'm not going to cut it. I need more money, and if we don't get it, we're not going to thrive." That is unworkable. We need to hire people that are willing to honor their word, honor their contract, and have a consequence put in place in the event that they cannot do so, that doesn't trickle down to the actual taxpayer instead of the business. Number two would be safety. I fled to Johnson County for my safety. I am a single mom. I was stalked and harassed, and that was absolutely not working where I previously lived. So I moved to Johnson County where I could have a quick speed to response, where we have very low crime. And the third would be tax abatement, and I'll go into that further at another time.
Thank you very much, Ma'am.
My pleasure.
Ms. McManay, I would like you to continue by having the next question be addressed to you.
There you go.
There you go. You get to extend the clock a little bit there. Living expenses in Johnson County have seen double-digit increases over the last four years. Homeownership is becoming a challenge for people working in a number of professions, such as first responders and educators. In addition, costs for individuals, including those on fixed incomes who own their homes without a mortgage, continue to rise. Let me repeat that again. Costs for individuals, including those on fixed incomes who own their house without a mortgage, their costs continue to rise. How would you address the need for more varied pricing housing options in Johnson County?
Thank you so much for asking, Brian. This is the world that I'm in. This is the client that I help. These are the hundreds of people on a monthly basis that I talk with regarding their housing experience. My third initiative that I didn't mention would be tax abatement for first responders, full-time educators, and fixed incomes, such as those retirees who are not able or willing to go out into the workforce that do have homes paid in full. We additionally could use some revitalization and repurposing for underutilized spaces that potentially not only the business developer of that underutilized space, but also the occupant could achieve a tax abatement to have a mitigated short-term financial benefit that would work all the way around for a revision. And then finally, just circling back, as I said before, that if we don't honor the contracts we currently have, there should be and could be a penalty enforced to the business or vendor in which the contract is not performing that does not trickle down to the taxpayer. The everyday people can no longer afford to have their costs rise. It is absolutely unworkable, and I am doing and willing to be committed to whatever it takes, whether that's teaching personal financial classes in my own time, taking it to accounting level, which is what I'm aiming to do right now. This mess has got to stop.
Thank you very much, Ms. McManay. Ms. Bass, question to you, and it was quite lengthy, so I'll go ahead and repeat it for you. Living expenses in Johnson County have seen double-digit increases in the last four years. Homeownership is becoming a challenge for people working in a number of professions, such as educators and first responders. In addition, costs for those individuals who are on fixed incomes who own their home without a mortgage continue to rise. How would you address the need for more varied options for housing in Johnson County?
So housing was, has been a top priority for me. January, my first term in office, I brought housing to my county commissions. It was not a board priority. I brought together all the cities in my district, and we conducted a housing study, a market study that hadn't been done. I had served on the 2008 Housing Task Force, and the county commission at that time shelved it. So I led, and we brought forth a housing task force and study, which was completed last spring. We are now in the process of hiring a housing coordinator, which I also brought forth to the commission, to have a point person to work with our builders, our developers, our chambers. And some of the priorities that we have worked on, I serve on the three-member Commission Housing Subcommittee, is homeownership, and Mid-America Regional Council has brought forth funding for that. We've also looked at rehab. I am going to continue to work on weatherization, exterior, interior, and access federal grants on that. And we must expand workforce housing. I've worked with a nonprofit agency who's working in Gardner now and helped him access federal funds. City of Mission is having a new housing project with 20% housing affordability. So there is more that we need to do. The county cannot work on this alone. We need all of you. We need developers, builders, residents. We have just a huge shortage of supply, and that crisis is growing, and it'll be a top priority if I'm elected.
Thank you very much, Ma'am. Moving forward, Ms. Bass, we'll have the next question, and this is going to tie into some of the responses that have been cited in previous answers for both of you. Funding for roads, infrastructure, and first responders have been provided by the Board of County Commissioners for the new Sunflower Ammunition Panasonic Plant. With a number of employees projected to be brought in for this project, do you feel we have an adequate range of housing to accommodate those individuals to live within Johnson County?
First of all, I'm proud to be one of the commissioners that supported the roads and the fires to make the Sunflower Ammunition Plant possible, those jobs, and I supported the cleanup, too. I toured the plant with DeSoto City Manager and Mayor to work on the housing issue. There is not enough jobs, I mean, not jobs, enough housing in that area. Johnson County has an inadequate supply, just as the governor's new housing study shows. The state of Kansas has an inadequate supply for seniors, low income, middle income. But the legislature passed this year some, you know, major tools for rural areas, but that won't address county, urban counties like us. So there's more that needs to happen on the state level to make it possible for our cities to have more workforce housing and for Gardner and DeSoto. This will be a top priority for me. We need legislative tools. Johnson County has to work with our cities. 60% of our county is in the incorporated area now. And so this is something that all of us need to join together and make this a top priority, because we have, just for the county alone, 4,000 coming at the Sunflower, 4,000 that the county helped make happen at the Century Airport.
Thank you very much, Ma'am. Question is to you, Ms. McManay. Let me go ahead and repeat it for you. Funding for roads, infrastructure, and first responders have been provided for the Board of County Commissioners for the new Sunflower Ammunition Panasonic Plant. With a number of employees projected to be brought in for this project, do you feel that we have an adequate range of housing to accommodate these individuals to stay in Johnson County?
I'm going to read you some statistics. Currently...
I love statistics.
I know. It makes me feel so good, because guess what math doesn't have? A political party. Everyone wants more of their dollars. Math additionally doesn't have any feelings. One plus one is two, no matter what. Now, according to August of 2022, which is the latest data that's available publicly on Johnson County, this is through our Heartland MLS, supply is actually up 9.1%, and this was as of September 7th. The data is in arrears, okay? So this is the most accurate data for Johnson County available housing. Supply is up 9.1%. But the question that was received is collapsing a difference between availability and affordability, okay? The median sales price in Johnson County is $406,000 for the sales price. Now, let me tell you, as a professional in lending for 19 years, the average income that's been publicly provided for the Panasonic Plant for these 4,000 jobs is a $50,000 a year wage earner. That doesn't match. This $50,000 a year earner, without a sizable down payment or multiple people living in their home, does not have affordability in Johnson County, period. That's just a fact. Are the homes available? Yes. Is the access to get the funding to afford to live in the home available? No.
Thank you very much, Ma'am. Pivoting, Ms. McManay will go ahead and stay with you. The Johnson County Health Department just hosted its first annual health summit at Johnson County Community College on the 9th of September, which was a great event, I heard. One thing that emerged from this event is the issue of women's health. As county and safety net agencies continue to discuss this topic, would you be supportive of initiatives around this need? Please explain why.
I am a woman. I am a mother. My daughter is female. I am absolutely supportive of women's health. In regard to life, I support all life, at all phases of life, at all stages, in every single way of life. I cannot elaborate further than that. So without details, without specifics, I support the health and lives of all human beings, including women, and especially women, because I am one.
Thank you. It'd be much more simple than that.
Yeah.
Ms. Bass, the same question to you, ma'am.
Yes, I will definitely support advanced maternal and women's health. I've worked on the front lines at KU, at Kansas City Hospital, the VA. The first health summit brought out some really health inequities. We are the healthiest county in the state, but we have some inequities. Black babies are three times as more likely to die than white babies. So more needs to be done, because we have many women coming to our public health department without a medical home. So we need to work with the health providers so they have a medical home. We provide some incredible services for first-time moms, pregnant teens. One of my favorite, as a gardener, is our community garden staffed by volunteers for our Women, Infant, and Children's Program. I was able to work with them to get a refrigerator for their vegetables. I feel really strongly that our public health department provides access to birth control. Women must have the freedom to choose their reproductive health care and be given all available resources by our health department. I will never vote to restrict access to birth control and all available options. The opportunity is now to shape the future of women's health in Johnson County.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bass. As we start rounding up, we're about 25 minutes after the hour. I've got two more questions for you ladies, if you find that would be okay.
Try to be nice ones.
I try to be nice. I try to be nice. So Ms. Bass, the next question would be to you. And then we'll throw the first response to you. The demand for social services in Johnson County has increased. With poverty levels trending, coupled with limited state funding to the county, what do you see as being a solution in stabilizing safety net services within the county? And I'll also add to, COVID has not been very user-friendly on these services as well.
Yes, this is, I, this is a real passion of mine. I also have a master's in social work. Before my term on the county commission, there had never been anyone with a background of health and human services on the county commission. We have a large role that we play in human services. So addressing the vulnerable populations has been a priority of mine. One of the key solutions that I've seen in my 30 years of practice, policy work, is collaboration, planning, bringing all the agencies together so there isn't duplication. And when you bring together, you expand the availability of resources. We use a united community services to lead that planning services. We also, I'm very much into that we must constantly analyze the gaps that exist. I've pushed forward that some of our ARPAP funds will be to have a data system that will connect our region. We have 1,000 unhoused children every night in our school district. But these children might go to WINDAC. They might go to KCMO, and we have no data system that looks and to help them and work collaboratively. So I will be pushing that forward. Removing barriers to stable employment is key. And one of that areas that I've worked on is transit. We have been moving forward some flexible transit options. We rolled out shared transit for persons with disabilities, like my brother. So now there is a micro-transit option. So I will be continuing to work on solutions, especially with the redesign of our criminal justice system that includes mental health and supports.
Thank you very much, Ma'am. Ms. McManay, the question now is to you. The demand for social services in Johnson County has increased. Poverty levels trending up, coupled with limited state funding to the county, what do you see as being a solution to stabilizing safety net services within the county?
Thanks, Brian. You know, I had to look this up. Did you know that the Human Service Safety Net benefits everyone and is an important part of healthy, thriving community? It works to ensure individuals and families in Johnson County can contribute to society regardless of their challenges or circumstances. These programs and services provide a pathway out of poverty and create opportunity for the community's most vulnerable residents. That's what it says on the website. Vulnerable people don't have access, so there needs to be an access where they can receive the data, not maybe public or on the computer or something of that nature that's technological. If you don't have a home, you probably don't have a cell phone that you're checking into your Facebook on. You know, how are we going to get access to these human beings? We need to show up. We need to go where they are. We need to listen to what they need, what they're requesting, and then create solutions from there. Having lived outside of this area, mass transit is more necessary in tighter, more urban communities. It may not be the best spending of our resources here. In the time I've been in Johnson County, I've not necessarily seen a whole lot of people riding the bus or getting access to the bus, because those urban communities that need a more public mass transit don't exist here. We're a little more spread out. It's a different access. So that might not be the best use of our funds to access these people, to help them actually get out of being vulnerable and into a more beneficial position.
Thank you very much, Ma'am. So I'm going to say it's the seventh in stretch. Everybody take a deep breath. We finished six questions. We're about to start our seventh and last question. Folks, I very much appreciate you all bearing with us here. I think we've gotten some great responses back, and I hope you find this platform of value to you. So last question. We've talked about initiatives. We've talked about affordable housing. We've talked about safety net services. Infrastructure. Let's talk about infrastructure. So Ms. McManay, the question is to you. Johnson County continues to grow its population at a very steady pace, 560,000 plus and growing. This creates a greater need for investment within community services and infrastructure, development, and maintenance. Please share what your approach in managing the county's budget would be amid the challenges in dealing with state-imposed limitations on funding and revenue sources. on funding and revenue sources available for the local jurisdiction. I find this segues perfectly into your last response.
As I said before, listening to what the needs of the community are, assessing, and then going back to how we deal with a budget. We review a budget. We monitor and we manage a budget. So if we've got a pool of monies that's available and we know what the people of the county are asking for that need these services, then we go to that section of the budget and we make the appropriate action. If it's workable, we work it. If it's not workable, we pivot. We alter. We adjust as needed. The listening is missing. I have been present in meetings where the people have said one thing, and the response from leadership has been as if it was fallen on deaf ears, like we were talking to a wall. The missing is the listening of what the people are asking for. So again, I go back to listen, assess, and then we can find additional monies from those vendors and businesses that are providing us services by implementing verbiage in the contract that applies a fiscal penalty for non-performance.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Finally, to you, Ms. Bass, with your work as an incumbent as you've been working on this, can you please share what your approach has been in managing the county budget amid these spending, excuse me, state-imposed limitations on revenue generation?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. I work to be a responsible steward of your tax dollars. Each year, I spend six to eight months going through and combing through our budget, identifying savings, meeting with the program and project directors, our county managers, without sacrificing essential services. I go and speak at each of our city councils to have them give me input on our budget. I go speak at our school districts. I go speak with our fire district director. I speak at churches and neighborhood groups to get their input. I have an email, Facebook. So I really work to gather input. We have budget hearings. I have asked to have an evening hearing, but have been overruled on that. I am proud that we've maintained our AAA bond rating. We are only one of 42 counties nationwide to have this AAA bond rating. Recently, we got a 1.31% interest rate for our ambulance building. That saves Johnson County an incredible amount of money because so few counties have it. We recently brought over our flow from Missouri for renovations in our new Tomahawk wastewater, saving taxpayers $785 million by the innovations of technology. Our population has gone up 80,000, but our staffing level is flat from the 10 years. So I will continue to bring forth more opportunities for savings and consolidation under my leadership.
Thank you very much. This concludes the question and answer portion of our forum for the candidates. At this time, we will go ahead and now hear the closing remarks from each candidate, and we will start with Ms. McMahon.
Thank you again so much for being here today. Thank you for the opportunity, Northeast Chamber. It's been a delight. Thank you, Leader Chamber, for being here. Thank you, everyone, for watching, for showing up in person. And really, I look forward to you speaking and me listening. And I will apply my bold leadership to execute what you want. And as a fellow Johnson County citizen, my number-one priority is I want all my money in my pocket, and I assert that you would like more of your money in your pocket as well. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be of service, to take a chance for somebody that does have the financial acumen and leadership skills, but looking to expand that at a young age, to do so as I grow into the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We will now hear the closing remarks. Mark Hennig.
Yes, thank you for joining us today to let us talk about the future of Johnson County. I hope to hear more from you in the days to come. I will continue to work to bring together local and regional leaders to create more progress. I will ensure that our budget is managed with fiscal accountability and long-range planning. I have over 30 years of experience in the public and nonprofit sectors in elected, appointed, and volunteer roles to draw upon. Your vote this November will make a difference whether mental health, aging, and housing services are fully funded. Your vote will make a difference whether our roads are paved and your toilet flushes and whether Johnson County continues to be a welcoming place for business. I assure you, when you reelect me, our county will continue to be a top place to live, work, and play. Let's keep dreaming, visioning, and reimagining Johnson County. So I ask you to check out my website, beckyfaust.com. But most of all, I ask you for your vote on November 8.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bass. Ms. Bass, thank you so much for your service and dedication. Ms. McMahon, thank you so much for your willingness to share your leadership with the county. Ladies and gentlemen...